Our call to order, it is 7:01 PM. And I'll move first to our land acknowledgement. The Town of Anuvik acknowledges that we are located on the traditional lands of the Guchen and Inuvaluit people of the Northwest Territories. We are grateful to be allowed the opportunity to learn, work, and live on Treaty XI lands within the Guchen settlement area and the lands of the Inuvaluit final agreement. We respect the generous sharing of traditional wisdom and knowledge, and we commit to honoring paths towards self-determination. So we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. There was a change from the original one. There was two items added. This one that's printed at the front is the updated version if you need it. Any comments on the agenda tonight? None? All right, on to Declaration of Conflict of Interest or Pecuniary Interest. Counselor Devlin?
Um, nine point one.
Okay.
Is it actually eight point one? I'm not sure. It's on the list.
Um, I think probably should just because it is.
What was that?
The solid waste.
Yeah, was that eight point one or is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. The person walking in the door is Mr. Obey from the RCMP. Awesome, Counselor Alexis. Um, and so we have delegations, presentations, or petitions tonight. We had the RCMP report which was mailed or emailed out this afternoon. Uh, Counselor Devlin?
For our order, you might want to ask for the Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Now we have a new counselor in the room.
Okay, thank you. I will again call for Declaration of Conflict of Interest or Pecuniary Interest. Counselor Alexis.
And I think it's my fourth one. Thank you.
Right, so now we'll move on to delegations, presentations, or petitions. We do have the RCMP report was emailed out this afternoon. We do not have a representative in the room right now, but if there are any questions, if you please either state them now or send them to myself and Jenna and we will forward them on to from the staffs, the staff sergeant Obey. I'm over at the detachment. Were there any comments or questions tonight? None? All right. Uh, moving on to number five, public question period. We do not have any members of the public attending this evening. On to adoption of the minutes, the minutes of the October 23rd and 25th council meeting. Any comments or questions? None? Onto the action items list. Uh, this list again was sent out this afternoon with some updates on it. It is robust at this time. Were there any particular questions? Anyone had? Counselor Gowan's, and I'll let SAO Travish answer any questions here.
Uh, SAO Travish, I know I asked about the report for, um, condemned buildings. I noticed that it's not been sent yet. Have they, has ACOM sent you a revised timeline on that, a date?
Counselor Gowan, I I'm starting to struggle with our engineers. They are very busy and they from week to week I get, you know, delay after delay after delay. So I and I think that's just because of our, you know, our location and they're working out of Edmonton. And it's not the greatest arrangement. Um, I did recently meet with another engineer who is trying to establish more of a local presence. It's, um, his name is Mark Hasagawa. And he was here last week. I met with him in person. I've had a number of phone conversations with him since. He is very excited to be recruiting an engineer for our town that will work for him. I even have offered that they may want to enter into an arrangement with us because we have spare office space upstairs. Um, and he is putting together a pilot project schematic for our utility door system for next year's budget. So much more receptive, quicker, faster, um, getting a quicker turnaround time. So I may slowly as we get more and more familiar with Mr. Hasagawa, we may start shifting some of our work toward him and that may speed up the process. As far as ACOM is concerned, last email I had from them said that they were back by about a week. And so today I still do not have a formal report from them. Thank you.
Thank you, SAO. Uh, Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, just following up on land sales. We have that note that the IDC contract, uh, not completely holdback was requested. So I'm just curious to know. What's going on there?
Oh, Counselor Devon, that is correct. We still do not have a finalized, um, purchase and sale agreement with the IDC, nor do we have payment. They, their last, um, negotiation with our law firm was they requested to have a $25,000 holdback on each lot. And, um, I rejected that clause being added to the new contract. I struck it and I sent our lawyer instructions to take all reference to a holdback out and it's back in their back with their legal record. Thank you.
Counselor Mayor?
Have they provided a rationale as to why they would want that?
Counselor Mayor, in fact, they did. They were requesting a $25,000 holdback per lot until the utility door was built was the reason for holdback.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Devlin?
Is it possible to go forward with that and charge them interest then on that holdback? Thank you.
So thought we didn't think about that. Um, I'm just frustrated and getting quite tired of this. So in fact, you'll know it on one of my action items, Counselor Devon. Devon, um, oh dear, maybe I didn't add it. Um, I reached out to a new, um, real estate agency out of Yellowknife, Remax. We were originally trying to, um, get some traction with Coldwell Banker out of Yellowknife. And I just didn't get a very responsive, um, effort put forward by Coldwell Banker. Uh, the new contact I've reached out to at Remax is planning to come up here and do a site visit of all the land we have for sale. And if they are more receptive to moving forward, I'm gonna probably put signs on everything through Remax and list all of our commercial and residential land. And the first person who could put a deposit down and be serious about buying it will will, um, start entertaining our first time.
Any further questions from council? None. Did you have any presentation?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Deputy Mayor Kowalski. Uh, I just wanted to touch on item number one. Um, again, my apologies for having to push uh, back and cancel our budget workshops that we had planned. I was hoping that council could, um, give me a confirmation on rescheduling the dates. Um, I was gonna propose that we go to Wednesday, November 15th and Wednesday, November 29th as evening appointments from six to eight. If that works for council, I would love to, to hear your feedback. If not, we could go to the Saturday morning workshop where we were gonna go, uh, nine to 11 or nine till noon. Um, with a backup plan of having Saturday, December the second as a backup meeting in case we needed one additional. Or any feedback that I can have of those dates, that'd be great. Then we can resume our budget plan.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Mayor and then Counselor Gowan's.
I would be very interested in doing it on Wednesdays. That's easier.
Um, I'm only out of town on the 15th, but as long as I can connect by phone by video, then I'll jump in. And if they don't appear for the day, then I'll, I'll jump in.
Counselor Devlin?
Uh, I'll also be out of town on the 15th, uh, and I'll be unable to connect, uh, at that, at that time period unfortunately. And also out of town on the 2nd. But I am in town on the 29th. I promise I'll be doing that for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Day?
Unavailable.
And for myself, I do have commitments on the 15th already, but the 29th and 2nd I'm open to.
Deputy Mayor Kowalski, if I could ask council about the Monday evenings, the 13th and the 27th. I would prefer us in person. Um, there's a lot to go through in this upcoming budget in 2024. We have a lot of new, new territory to tread into, so.
When is the staff?
Correct, yeah. Um, sorry, did I say the 13th? Yeah. How about the 20th? And the 27th, Monday evening?
The 20th is council?
Oh, that's true. Um, Tuesday and Thursdays. We don't have any meetings.
Twenty first or twenty third? Sorry, 20th or 30th?
About the 20th and the
The 20th is our meeting. That counts.
I was hoping to split the workshops, one dedicated to operating budget and one dedicated to capital budget because they're so different and there's a big discussion to be had around capital.
Can I just ask for those that are going out of town, the weeks we were talking about, when are you back? Is there a time when you're both back? Or available?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm gone the 14th through the 19th, and then again the first with December through the fifth. Okay? How about a town on the 12th until the 20th?
Of December?
Of November. And then December not until, until our, 21st, 22nd until first week of January.
So November 22nd and 23rd work or is that overlap with town council?
We have council on the 22nd. We have the 20th.
20th is council. The 21st or the 20th and the 22nd.
Well, we can go back to the 15th and 29th and just some of you have the the digital.
Yep. I should be able to figure this out.
We'll make sure our technology is a hundred, hundred percent.
So just to clarify though, that's November 15th to November 29th?
Right, six, six to eight. So you're not here to Okay, I'll send out, I'll revise our budget planner and I'll get Jenna to send everybody a revised one. Thank you for that. And Deputy Mayor Kowalski, I just had a couple more comments about the action item list. Number two is something that I was just made aware of. I guess we're supposed to have a, um, a, a list of pre-approved small contractors for our small day-to-day work. So my apologies for for not being on top of that. We will get something posted. And I'm thinking that since it's kind of the end of the year, that when we post something and get a list going, it'll be effective whenever that starts. And we'll just carry that forward right into 2024 rather than doing a list now and ending it on December 31st and starting all over again. We'll just we'll put out a request for small contractors. We'll choose them, make sure they have all the right credentials. And then if they start on December the 2nd, it can just run through to the end of the fall in here. Is everybody okay with that?
Just clarification. So that just, that's just the list that we have that says these are the people in town who can do certain jobs. It's not handing out contracts.
That's correct. It's not handing them out. It's just a pre-qualified list. So if you're a painter, you can sign up with the town, put your name, company name down, and then you'll just verify that you have WCV and insurance.
Okay.
It's mostly for the small projects like under $5,000.
One more question. That means that the persons on that list then from the 2022 fall, we would just carry through to the end of December and then this new list would start January?
I'm not aware of an existing list.
Oh, I see.
We checked. I, I think it's been something that's been sort of not revisited and refreshed every year. So I think we'll start with a brand-new request for interest and pick the, pick the list or actually, we don't really need to pick anybody. It's just more or less an opportunity for anyone to sign up and offer their services. And then what we would do is we would just rotate from that list as we go forward.
Okay. Or does that mean? Sorry, go ahead.
That's my understanding of how it worked in the past, that if you were a painter and we had three painters on the accrued list, we give one paint job to one contractor, then the next one to the next one.
Yeah, and that means like in the last two years, if there's a new company in town, that they then get an opportunity to get their name in with the town, right?
That's correct.
Any questions on that item? Anything further to mention?
Uh, just, just to let, um, council know that we are very aware of the, um, standing water in the parking lot at the MSC. The staff is doing everything in their power to find the source of that. I'm, I've had a long conversation with Director Krug today on the telephone and they are exhausting all efforts internally to see if we can come up with a solution or at least a source to where the water's coming from. Um, and I've also mentioned it to Mark Has, perhaps he could offer some services as well if he comes up to town next to take a look at it. Um, but we are working on it. And Director Krug, if you have anything further you want to add to that, since we spoke last, I'd I'd be very happy to hear that we've have a, a more, more recent update compared to this afternoon. You want me to come into the microphone? Sure.
If you have more to add, please do.
Um, so we've been taking a look at some of the, uh, piping and crawling underneath the pool, um, into the basin areas and looking to see where things could be potentially leaking from. And we're not going to be seeing much at ground level, so we have to, um, start looking at some specific marine dye that's, um, environmentally friendly and behavior-friendly. Um, but we need a couple thousand liters of it, uh, to dye 400,000 liters of pool water, um, for it to be able to trace if it is going to the parking lot. Um, if not, it'll dilute and we won't find a result we need. So, uh, we are looking into a specific marine dye that is environmentally friendly and person-friendly. And, uh, we've reached out to a number of, um, aquatic experts, um, through the NWT RPA, uh, through Life Safety Society and to, uh, Mercur Pools. And we have a conference call with them uh, on Wednesday this week, um, to find some more recommendations on how we can potentially source our problem without having to ultimately drain the pool again and close operations. So we're gonna try to remain open for as long as we can, um, with the resources that we're going to use. And hopefully we'll be able to, um, pinpoint the problem and have it resolved without, um, going back to 2018, 2019, uh, problems and, and move forward from there. And that's currently all I have for enough data on the aquatic center.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? And I know it's pretty, uh, pretty clear statement, but just in case. None? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, I'd just like to say that I appreciate capital's time and that we are, um, looking forward to resolving the problem as quickly as possible. So, um, you're in good hands. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Krug.
And on a happy note, um, we have seen an amazing amount of progress made at the concession stand at the MSC. It's been freshly painted. New equipment has been arriving. And I'm sure that we will see a smiling face behind the counter here in the next few days. Yeah. Thank you.
That's great news. Thank you. All right, so unless there's any other questions on the active items list? None? We move on to new business. Does the funding for the solid waste site improve, site improvement? Counselor Harder has declared conflict on this. We're just getting on the moment to leave the room. Harder has left the room. So this bygone, uh, does have some funding implications, um, but also has funding attached to it. Maybe I'll just let SAO Travish, uh, speak to it and then we'll see if there's any questions.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, so in a nutshell, the GNWT applied for a grant through ISIP, which is a federal government funding. They were successful in, um, obtaining $2.5 million in funding. And with that funding, they have allocated it um, across all the communities in the Gulfport Delta region. And that is listed on page five of eight point one. And the Town of Anuvik that had that two and a half million dollars was allocated $150,000. And with that $150,000, um, contractors will come in and the whole objective of the program is to make additional space in landfills in our region. So the way they'll do that is they will de-pollute things like propane tanks and vehicles, anything with chemicals in it. And once they're de-polluted in the future, they'll, um, be able to condense the, the metal by squishing it or making it more compact and shipping it away. So that is phase one of this project. And Anuvik was, um, the last community to join onboard with this, this program. So I did sign off on the funding or the contribution agreement with, um, our regional superintendent of municipal and community affairs, which is Ignat Moran. And the last piece of this project is to, um, allocate $37,500 of our annual CPI funding towards $150,000. So we have to put in a small matching contribution of $37,500. And then at the end of the day, um, the GNWT or through the ISIP funding is supplying our community with $112,500. So, um, the administration is recommending that council approve this, uh, motion in your next meeting on Wednesday night because it is a good program and it clears, um, contaminants out of our landfill. It creates more space. Um, well, I did meet with, uh, the folks behind the program from GNWT and, uh, Counselor Harder was in attendance in that, at that meeting as well because he does run the landfill for us. And he did a site tour with them to see what kind of space they could create. And it really was a good program. So at the end of the day, we would like council to approve this so we can take advantage of the funding um, and be part of the bigger community program. There will be a phase two of this program coming out in future years where once they have de-polluted as much as they can, then we'll go to phase two, which will be additional ISIP funding for, um, looking at things like bringing in a baler to squish vehicles into bales and shift themself. So I would appreciate your support on that, thank you.
I have a question. Just for clarity, I think, uh, we may have heard about this funding before, but this is only for items that are already in the solid waste site. This isn't a call to bring a bunch of vehicles from around town and stick them in there real quick, is it?
Uh, so part of the site visit was to assess the inventory that's already there. And there's a number of fridges and propane tanks and other, um, refrigerant-type machinery and vehicles that can be de-polluted. So we don't have to bring in more to make the program, um, usable. We, we had enough there.
Okay. Any other questions from council? So Devlin, could you bring back to Sir Harder, please? Yeah. Just during transition, we can move towards nine point one. Uh, and Counselors Devlin, Devlin and Alexis have, uh, declared conflict on this item. Counselors Devlin and Alexis have gotten a break for them. And so again, this time we have a bylaw to acquire land. And once more, I will hand over to SAO Travish to make his statement for presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, so this, um, is a project that dates back to early summer of this year. I was approached by uh, the Guchen Tribal Council. They have a small, um, I guess, garden area in front of their building, which is reflective of their look and appearance to not only their organization and their building, but to the town as well. It is right on our main Mackenzie Boulevard in town. And they would very much like to, um, dust that piece of property off and beautify it. Um, they would like to, uh, do some trimming and some re-landscaping and make it a nice attractive little park-like type of, um, lot in front of their building. I thought that was a terrific idea, so I investigated into it further and found out that that little piece of land, that three-countel crescent is actually, um, commissioner land. So what this bylaw would allow us to do is it would allow us to, um, fill out the application and acquire that piece of land from commissioner's land and have a change to municipal land. Then we would rezone it as a park. It's park, um, zoning. And then we would ask council at a later meeting to donate the little lot to the Guchen Tribal Council so that they can then undertake it for next spring to beautify it. Well, that's the just of the, of the bylaw. And we would be requesting first and second reading on Wednesday.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Mayor, Counselor Mayor?
The bylaw would require them to keep it as a little park.
The bylaw, Counselor Mayor, would allow the municipality to acquire it from the commissioner to the municipality, um, under the ATV Act, all land has to be approved, all land acquisitions have to be approved by a bylaw.
Right, but then it would be zoned as park.
We would then zone it as a park.
My reason for asking that is I know they're very short for parking there. And I can see in a few years down the road, somebody will need to just clear it out and have no parking. Um, and I'll quite honestly, I don't think most of us even knew it was a little park until recently this was brought up, so. That would be great. It would look much nicer.
Thank you. Any other questions? Or we'll come back and vote on it on Wednesday. Counselor Day, would you mind bringing it back?
Yep.
So Devlin and Alexis have returned. Our next, uh, item is number 10, department reports or updates. We do not have any this evening. So we'll look forward to those later in the month. Um, onto information items, uh, listed here are the strategic priorities chart. And here are our research institute, various research projects. Um, any questions or comments on those two items? People probably do for an update or something with the strategic priorities, but um, Counselor Devlin?
Your question.
Fair.
Um, uh, priority number three, called testing opportunities. That was, um, is intended at least initially for our, our Director of Economic Development. Is that, uh, because we're still fully staffed up.
Transition.
Transitioning in, in that, uh, area. I don't want to pull it. I just, I still think it's a, it's a, it's an important thing. But I, I just, if we can maybe adjust the timeline to be a bit more, uh, realistic. Yeah, like I said, just because we're using that as transition. Thank you.
SAO Travish?
Counselor Devon, I would say to you that, that we will have a couple budget workshops coming up. And one of the items you brought forward in an earlier meeting was discussion around the tourism tax. Um, so what I would propose is that we include all ideas on the table as part of budget discussion, including things like cold, um, that's cold weather testing, utility door pilot projects, tourism packs. We'll, we'll list all those and we'll prioritize them and see if there's a cost implication to the budget. Council would ultimately, at the end of the day, have to vote to make a motion to bring those types of projects or, or programs into the, into the budget process. Especially if they have to be staffed or if there's a cost involved with them. So I would propose that we bring those forward as budget discussion items for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on either of the information items? Just a couple further items in front of you on your desk is a printed copy of the draft community plan. If you can take the time to review it and get back with notes that you have in need. Um, and then also there is a hard copy of the schedule for the next year for council. Um, that you have in common with you or if you ever you'd like to. Um, so moving on to item number 12, we have council concerns. I have one item that's not necessarily a concern. I just wanted to make note of an email that council received from a resident, um, thanking Director Krug and his crew at the MSC for their timely and professional manner in picking up the large item, um, items. I also wanted to note from myself as a counselor, um, that I really appreciated that we were able to get the second pickup for the year. I also wanted to note from myself as a councillor um that I really appreciated that we were able to get the second pickup for the year in there. Was something we had discussed a few times and uh really happy to see that come forward and give people the chance to clear out their yards again. Um so after saying that, I'll ask, is there any other council concerns tonight? Councillor Gowens?
Well, this is something I've raised in my past and um I'm trying to get my head around what we can do as a community when it comes to situations. And I raise this in the context of contractors coming up to do work for the town. And work is not being done to a certain standard. And there's problems and there's issues with the quality of the work. And the town has to pick up the cost to do the repairs. Whether it's time, things are shut down. We can't generate revenue as a town. We have to wait for contractors to come in and finish the work or do the repairs. Or we have to bring in new contractors to do the work. I don't understand why it's me that why is it a misfortune? We can't draft contracts or draft things where there's a there's a recourse in that contract so that if it's the fault of the contractor who does the work and fails to do it to a certain standard, we don't, we have a recourse to either another contractor to do the work properly, if that's the worst case scenario. Or we are compensated for the delay. Or we have the contractor do the work promptly to fix it. I'm struggling to understand why we can't draft our contracts so that that's a consideration. Now, this isn't to say it's going to be a given, but at the very least, we have a recourse where we can get things addressed quickly or we're not spending our own money from our own budget to fix a mistake that's not ours. So that could be something we can talk about it for the budget. Put on budget. Um I don't know. It's been raised to our legal team. Do I act with some contract law? I'm just I'm struggling to understand why we keep running into situations where there's delays or there's repairs and we're the ones picking up the cost of those repairs when we're not the ones doing the work. So.
Thank you. Councillor Gowens? Does S A O Travis have anything to add?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh councillor Gowen, I do know that our contract are all all of the major contracts are written with fullback provisions and and those those fullbacks are not released until certain milestones are met in the contract. Um if fullbacks are getting re- released and the work is not completed, I I since I've been here, I'm not aware of a situation like that. So I would ask for an example that I could follow up on and uh have it corrected. So going forward, it doesn't happen uh to us again. Um and as far as some of our smaller work, um for example, the new um pre-approved small contractors list that we're gonna put out and entertain interest for this this fall or this winter. Um again, we have the ability to pay only when the work is satisfactorily completed. So there there's always that last um I guess stick, if you want to call it a stick, that we are the ultimate payer at the end of the day. So I'm I would need some examples to follow up on where we paid a contractor and the work was was not satisfactory. Um if there was equipment involved, I'm assuming that the equipment would have had some type of a warranty involved with it. So um yeah, an example would be a good thing for us to talk into.
Um just before, I just want to be sure that we're not going to be just naming a bunch of names and things and okay. Tony or councillor Devon, go ahead.
Well, no, I just I think uh we can ask for a requirement for any contractors to have E and O errors and admissions insurance. Will be. And that should cover them for a period after a contract's closed, if anything comes up a year later with something. As well, I'm just require contractors have E and O insurance, cost them a little piece of their pie to get, but it's required to do business in time. We should look into that. Thank you.
And councillor Gowens?
But I think just some examples with the pool where we had issues that had to be repaired. Now, I'm not sure if that was from our own budget. I'm not sure if that was from the contractor's budget. In the sounds of it, it's it's already been considered and I appreciate that. Um mostly didn't want the delays for the pool. We were very fortunate. Organizations actually stepped up and contributed and provided a month's worth of free swimming because they didn't have to, but it was a generous token and part of those organizations that did it. Um so as as a as a municipality, I mean, we we don't charge a lot for the services, but it's it helps with our budget when it comes to providing those services. So those are things where it's kind of like I mean, if there's 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 a recourse already in place, then fantastic. And I'm happy to hear that. Um I like councillor Devon's idea where at the very least, there's something that that we can fall back on if the work's been done, but it's not within to certain standard and contractor left town, so.
Thank you councillor Gowens. Councillor Travis?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I would stay on the pool. The repairs that were made this summer for the caulking were um done at our cost. We did not take any recourse against the previous organization or contractor that would have put the initial caulking in, and that was probably before on my arrival. So Director Ly, if you wanna step up, step up to the microphone to help me out with this one, but the contractor prior to the caulking situation that we had this summer, um I guess one recourse would be that we could file a civil cream against them. If it is possible for that, for our law firm to prove that they were negligent to the type of caulking that they used, for example. Um that's definitely something that we can look into. There is a two-year statute of limitations on all civil claims. If we do want to put a claim in, that's something that I did not consider and something that I'm not aware of of that the fact that the first caulking was either incorrectly applied or was the wrong one. I don't know. Um the water in the parking lot is not related to the caulking. So that caulking that we had to repair this summer was a cost that we had to incur. Um the the water, the standing water in the parking lot, I understand, has been there prior to the caulking problem. Um and now that we have a new administration in place, we are doing everything we can at our under our own capacity with all different types of tests, whether it be turning on pumps, turning off pumps, turning on water supply, turning water supply off, measuring, watching meters. Um Director Krue can tell you, he's tried every trick up his sleeve to figure out what's going on. And um to back all of this hard work up that we're doing, we are going to reach out to a professional engineer. And if Mr. Hasagawa wants to bring staff here and we can rent him an office or two upstairs that's vacant and they can work out of our office, that will allow us to have engineers on site twenty-four seven to help us address these very um difficult infrastructure questions. We are living on permafrost and it's causing us concerns all the way from the utility door to the swimming pool. So we are looking for new ways of dealing with our infrastructure. And I think you're gonna see a lot of new interesting ideas come forward, not only for the pool, but for our utility door system as well.
Um just before I go to councillor Mero, Director Polia, did you have something to add? Okay, then we'll go to councillor Mero.
Are we sure the water's coming through the pool? Because I know um buildings along that side, you'll see a lot of water pooling into their yards, coming down to the hill. Basically, the hills from the ski hill are. So I'm not sure it's all pool water. We need to be careful about that. Go ahead, Director Polia.
That is one other consideration. We're trying to rule out that it is the pool. Um to ensure that uh if it is the pool, it it needs to be nipped in the bud beforehand, just because of the building itself as well. Further to that, it has been brought to my attention that that is a uh a concern as well, just the underground water. And uh one of our initiatives for the twenty twenty four is going to be the ditching, the abatement and and that type of thing. It's been quite a while since the drainage in town was looked at in terms of uh the brushing, the willows, uh is something backing, something up? The do, does ditching need to be deeper? So we are looking into that come twenty twenty four as well.
Thank you.
Councillor Gowens and then councillor Devon.
Yeah, I I I think the biggest thing for me is I see big projects coming to the town down the road, just given, you said, a second level infrastructure. And I see a lot of money being invested in those projects. Um and part of the reason why we we were able to look at the the pool was it wasn't in our budget and there was a lot of dollars from federal government. So if we budget based on numbers and we then run into situations where we don't have a recourse and where one's paying for poor workmanship on major projects, it's not small dollars. It's not a little bit of money here and there. So it's just, I mean, again, it's just, you know, how do we make sure that whatever we need? And it sounds like they have a lot of tools in the toolbox. But those big projects where there's a lot of money in the line and the repairs aren't cheap, that we have recourse that we can actually utilize to say, okay, no, that's on you. You're the contractor. You're the expert. You did the work. Poor workmanship has to be repaired. Now, here's a period of options to get it fixed and fixed properly. So.
Uh no, those are all good comments, councillor Gowen. And you know, there are other tools like performance bonds that can maybe be, you know, part of a a contract where the contractor has to supply a performance bond. And maybe that performance bond has to extend for three or four or five years past the life of the contract or the end of the contract. Usually the performance bond expires when you're done. Maybe there's tools where you can ask for a performance bond to have a longer life. Um there's, yeah, there's, we can reach out to Lawson and Mundell for help on putting more rigor on our contracts for sure.
Uh go ahead councillor Harder.
That would that would only be on bigger projects like the pool and things like that. You can't hold contractors liable for five years down the road on on certain projects, right? That's a careful what we do there.
Councillor Devon, I missed yours, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just sort of following up on councillor Mero's comment. Um could it be that we've just reached the sort of lifespan of sitting on big building on permafrost? And if the permafrost melt under the building, that we just aren't aren't uh being conscious of? Um it's it's been a maybe hot building sitting for twenty years, so.
Director Polia?
That is one of the considerations. Again, we are looking at the low line group to see if we can nip it in the bud. And once we have ruled out the obvious cause, that is also a consideration, understanding that it is sitting on a uh, you know, looking at the thermal cycles and and all of that type of thing. So we're aware of it and it is on the list of things that we need to rule out.
Thank you. Uh councillor Harder?
Is there any way that we can build a little bit of a dredge along that area so that the parking lot can still be used and they can have like proper water flow for drainage that can fill elsewhere and you can have somebody keep on top of that because uh it's really sad this already that we can't utilize our entire parking lot. And uh I mean, I see vehicles bottoming out like crazy in there. It's not a pretty sight.
Councillor Harder, sorry, Director Polia?
That is uh what we are attempting to do with some of um the dicking that we're already trying to do. Unfortunately, it's eroding underneath the snow and um through some of the dirt dicking that we already have. The other consideration is um determining where we would be putting, where we would be moving that water and its impact. For instance, if we were to try to divert it, we have to have consideration for baseball fields as well and what it's going to do to undermine the baseball fields. Uh it's trying to find the best spot to divert water if we can. Uh in the meantime, hopefully we will nip it in the bud before we have to go there.
Thank you. Uh director Cook has the same.
Uh to touch on councillor Harder's uh point about the parking, uh we have made a significant progress uh removing a bunch of seat cans, the trailer and other uh totes from the uh Bompas road. Uh so there is um more parking available there, although it is not front door parking. Uh there is still parking farther down in the same um lot on the other side on Bompas. So um taking a small section from the pool side. And we've made significant improvement on to the other side of where the storage was um for additional parking.
Thank you.
Great. I just forgot update as well. Are there any other items under council concerns, councillor Harder?
Um just the beginning, some complaints about the uh current road, um Arctic Road coming off the highway. It's very, very treacherous and icy in that area and uh we haven't seen a gravel truck yet this year. Um it'd be nice to have that frequently growled as it is is a trucking route for mannequin and you know, various.
Thank you. I believe it's being noted. Alright, with that, I see councillor Devon?
Yeah, I just I did have a question about the uh we've been putting an announcement out that we were gonna be having a four AM Sunday uh street grading basically and I don't know if it happened today or like it happened off me? And I take it all back. I was just driving around on Sunday going, ah, this was supposed to be.
Just had to have a last read.
I'm sorry.
We do not have any in-house items this evening?